My name is Michael Carrier.
Deb Hedke.
Joe Wesner.
I've been with Worthington Schools for about 14 years.
School bus driver for Worthington City Schools, and I've been here 11 years.
For a year and a half.
I can't call it a job. I can't call it a career. It's the best deal in town.
My kids went K through 12 in Worthington Schools, and I like kids, and I thought it'd be a really neat thing to do.
What I look forward to every day is just, you know, being around the kids, being around my fellow bus drivers.
And if you love to drive, which I do, and you love kids, which I do, you look forward to going to work on Monday mornings. You don't dread it.
If someone was asking me about the experience I've had at Worthington Schools.
It's fun. Once you learn how to drive the bus, and we have great onboard instructors that teach you how to turn the bus on a dime.
It's a good choice.
And they'll take out any doubt in your mind that you can't do it.
It's for me, and I believe would be for you also.
The kids in Worthington community, I can't speak for other communities, but in our community, the kids will respond, and the parents are very supportive.
And once in a while, I'll run into them at a field trip or a sporting event, and I hear this scream, "Mr. Mike," you know, and I look up and I see somebody, and it's one of the kids that I transported for years.
The first day of school, when I picked up and then dropped off the kindergarten students, just the look of joy on the parents' faces when they arrived home from school, pretty cool.
My grandkids have grown, so being around these kids today is a lot of pleasure. I really enjoy it and look forward to it every morning.
To me, it's the best deal in town. You'd be crazy not to at least consider it.
We fist bump as they get on the bus. We fist bump when they get off the bus.
You actually can change kids' lives.
Makes you happy and makes, obviously, the student happy.
Come join us. We're worth it.
Hey, we're out here at Worthington Park doing our spring cookouts in the school year. We'll be going around all the schools through the end of the year. All the kids are super excited to have some fresh grilled burgers for lunch.
Randy Adele. If you can find a seat, I'm gonna call the meeting to order here in just a minute. I think our very able administrators showed their versatility and got more seats back there. You can't hear it? Okay. All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Cusick, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Best.
Present.
Mrs. Davis.
Present.
Mrs. Hudson.
Present.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Present.
Mr. Wilson.
Here. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody for attending tonight, whether you're attending in person or online, but welcome. Let me at this time introduce the other six folks who are up here. To your far right over here is Board Member Kelly Davis. Next to her is Board Member Jennifer Best. On to your right of me is our treasurer, TJ Cusick. Next to me, on your left, is our superintendent, Dr. Trent Bowers. Next to him is our board vice president, Nikki Hudson, and to your far left is Board Member Kelly, Amy Lloyd. Sorry about that. At this time, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and it goes a lot better when we've got students in the room. Yep, thank you. At this time, may I have a motion to approve the agenda of the Board of Education, the agenda that was posted last Thursday pursuant to our board policy and to Ohio Revised Code?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes or addenda. Anybody want to make any changes, discussion? If not, Mr. Cusick, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes. At this time, we are about to have the event that I think I can very safely speak for all five board members that we most thoroughly enjoy as board members and as members of the community, and that is the opportunity to recognize our extraordinarily talented students. It's so awesome. We have so many very talented students, and it's just great. I'm just so glad the pandemic is, I hope, behind us, and we can go back to recognizing that. So at this time, may I have a motion to recognize students from both Thomas Worthington High School and Worthington Kilborn High School for their accomplishments in the Ohio Governor's Youth Art Exhibition, the Scholastics Art Competition, and the National Council for the Ceramic Arts, K-12 National Ceramic Art Exhibition?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Clearly, the board values this opportunity to publicly recognize staff and especially our students for their service to this district and the school community. We greatly appreciate everyone's attendance, and I do ask, however, that you remain seated throughout the duration of the recognition portion of the agenda. So at this time, again, I want to congratulate the students from Thomas Worthington and Worthington Kilborn for their incredible accomplishments in the Ohio Governor's Youth Art Exhibitions, Scholastics Art Competition, and the National Council for the Ceramic Arts, K-12 National Ceramic Exhibition. At this time, I would like for any of the art teachers at Thomas Worthington or Worthington Kilborn who are here to please come forward. Wow, awesome. Okay, this is great. That's it. I'm supposed to be some, is this the good place? Okay, I'm supposed to be kind of here in the middle. Yeah, it's okay, so that we can be seen here. I don't even know where the cameras are. But anyway, this is so awesome. Thank you all for coming out, and as you know, you teach some extraordinarily talented students, and you are extremely talented teachers yourselves. What I would like for you to do is to call the students up and describe a little bit about what the competition that they were entered in and how they did. So who wants to go first?
I do.
Great.
So if I could have Maya Pollens come up and Lydia Harani, can you hear me? Is this good? And Annie Went. And am I missing anyone else? Please raise your hand. We had a couple students that were gonna try to make it. All right. Yay. Thank you for being here. So Maya and Annie were in a national competition that is staged each year in a different city all around the United States. This year, it happened to be in Cincinnati, Ohio, which was pretty special, and they both were recognized for their work in the NSICA K-12 show. And Lydia has her pieces right now. You could go to the McConnell Art Center and see her work there for the Governor's Youth Art Competition. And I'm really proud of the three of you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hi, Erin Johnson. I'm one of the art teachers at Thomas, and I teach something called craft, but it's all metal smithing. So a few of my students were able to make it. It's the big Sage Jeffers. Come on up. Scout Richardson. Sophie Weitzel. And, I'm listening, I don't... Okay, so all three of these ladies were involved in a few different art shows. Sage has been awarded several things for AP. Her portfolio was on the AP website. It's still there. One out of 50 students was chosen to be on the AP website for their portfolio. She was chosen out of over 62,000 students worldwide from six different countries, so that was very special. She also was awarded a gold piece for her portfolio with Scholastic, and she also got something into the Ohio Department of Arts, the exhibition. Scout has been taking two AP art classes, and I myself, she's been AP with both of us, and had something in the governor's showing, you know, they're gonna show, you know, for that. And then Sophie was in the governor's show. She was in the regional show, which is at the McConnell Art Center. So they've all done amazing work. I'm very proud of them.
This is Maya. I'm AP and minored in art. This is my first year, and I just, again, am very amazed with the talent we have at the high school level. Sometimes I feel like it's not the art teacher per se, but it's the kids and their education. So Julian Cowan, yep, here, come on up. Awesome work. She's, I think, a junior, junior. So I mean, we got some young kids here that are working. And then she also takes a big AP next year, but her work is magnificent. She is in the regional competition at the McConnell Art Center. And honestly, she probably could have been in the state, but we're learning. I'm learning, and it's all about science a lot, and her work is spectacular. So go visit the McConnell Art Center. And then we have Ryan Smith. He, his picture made the state competition, and I do believe it was like 8,000 entries. And, you know, he chose him to be in the state competition. It's awesome. And he actually came up to me today and said, "Next year, I want to go bigger." And I thought, wow, that's awesome, because, you know, nothing stops him. And to add to his excellent art background and talent, he's an excellent runner, too. And I love running, and I see him running in the society. Well, actually, he was such a... He's so fast. I mean, probably didn't see me, but he is just amazing in both, running and his art talent, and he's just really dedicated and an awesome student. But thank you, yeah. It's really an honor to teach him, because, again, I feel like I don't really do much. It's very, really, you guys.
I teach, I'm in drawing. And maybe I can see, I didn't hear, but it's more of a case. I think he has a piece of artwork that has, there's that stain bubble, I'll have to go and check. And he's honored, along with a few other students, yesterday, they're honored for people that are, the group lady, and the other. And we also have a number of people, Dr. Lloyd, we did talk about that, probably, that are, Brandon Burdon, that's a company that we're, we're, we're committed to that. Really, he's, he's one of the live, he's having, after he's gone through that, and his skills, skills we have, ready to be, as, Fred James is with there. She was that day, or, the state, for the governor's. We have Raya Davidich, who's doing the track, and then we have Abby, who's.
Thank you. Thank you all very much, and congratulations for your awesome work. As you can tell, I'm out of practice doing this as a teacher too, right? Again, I'm gonna hand your pens to the teacher and the certificates and let you, let them hand it out to you. But thank you very much for coming and congratulations. And I just have to say, the exhibition, the MAC, I believe, ends on Friday or Saturday. Saturday, so please go. My wife and I have already gone. The artwork is just, it's just phenomenal. It's hard to believe these are high school students. My wife and I were members of the Museum of Modern Art, the Metropolitan Museum in New York City, and this artwork is phenomenal, so congratulations. And then at the Rife Center, it closes next month, so go down and see some other students' artwork at the Rife Center. So thank you very much for showing up, and I'm good, and you too, gotta see it here for everyone. But thank you so very much. In my excitement to honor these phenomenal students, very talented students, we have a nomination, but we have a motion, we have a second, but I failed to call a vote. So to make it official, we'll see how the vote comes out. Mr. Cusick, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Okay, y'all are welcome to stay. You're very welcome to stay, but this is a great time to leave if you have better things to do with your life, like homework, or more artwork, or some of you are in track, or softball, or whatever you're in, but we're just hanging out with family. You're certainly very welcome to stay. And I also want to thank the principals at Thomas Worthington, Pete Scully, and Eric, principal at Worthington Kilborn, Eric Thomas, for coming out to honor these phenomenal students. And please go to the MAC if you get a chance to before Sa- by Saturday, or I haven't made to the Rife Center myself, but I'm sure those are good, too. All right, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, is our public participation part of the agenda, and the school board and the administrative staff certainly encourage and very much appreciate community interest in the meetings of the Board of Education. This section. At this time, it's with enormous foreboding and frankly fear, but the superintendent has requested a moment to make an announcement or something, and I did not quiz him as to what it was, but I'm hoping for the best but fearing the worst, but.
That's fair. So with a positive recognition, and then with Eric choosing to continue the positive vibe, which we appreciate, I just want to take a moment and just point out to our crowd that today happens to be the birthday of our Board of Education President, Dr. Wilson. So what we would like to say on behalf of our administration, on behalf of the board, and those that are in attendance, we want to say happy birthday. And we do have a cake for Dr. Wilson, so I'm gonna actually walk around, I'm gonna pass this to Mr. Maddox, who's gonna cut the cake and make sure that at least Charlie and hopefully other board members get some cake while Jeff actually presents his technology update. So, Dr. Wilson, happy birthday.
Good luck up there.
Yeah.
This is not what I expected or feared. I didn't even see the cake sitting there. I wasn't very observant, obviously. I was fumbling over how to honor our phenomenally talented students, I have to say. It's brought tears to my eyes. I'm so happy, though, that the announcement wasn't what I feared. I've heard of announcements of resignations.
This was purely a birthday announcement. With that, we will transition to our technology presentation.
All right. I am looking forward now to Mr. Collett's presentation on technology, and it's been quite a long time since this board has had a presentation on technology, and so I think we're all looking for it earnestly. Mr. Collett.
Well, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Board of Education. I appreciate the opportunity. The topic this evening, we're going to be talking about cybersecurity, the state of specifically in K-12. I can't compare with cake, so I'm just going to dive into it. So unfortunately, I can't share a ton of details, just with the nature and sensitivity of a lot of our actions and approaches, so we're just going to cover a broad overview. But if anyone, if any board member has anything specific, they're wondering, hey, what exactly are we doing to mitigate against something like that, more than willing to have that conversation directly with you. So with that, I did want to start specifically with the definition of cybersecurity. I'm not going to read it. Everyone has that in front of them, but just making sure. We hear about it in the news, and I want to make sure that we all have the same understanding of some of this language and jargon that's out there that's pretty common in my world, but just want to make sure that we address that. So another phrase that you're going to hear me use throughout this conversation is called a bad actor. That's just another data point for people that are probably on the other side of the cybersecurity, or the cyber criminals. So that's a common phrase that you're going to hear throughout this presentation. So just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page. So with that diving in, I just wanted to cover the state of cybersecurity, specifically in education. This really, this new push that we're in right now really started during COVID. We learned that K-12 across the whole country really became a focus from a lot of these bad actors for a lot of different reasons. Why COVID, I don't know, but we definitely saw an increase in incidents across the country. So as we do that, what you see in front of you, some of the breakout of some of these incidences that we see, we see a lot of data breaches, ransomware, denial-of-service attacks, phishing. You've probably heard some of these phrases on news stories, things like that, specifically data breaches. We hear about them fairly often these days. There's, you know, customer information that gets compromised for large corporations in those scenarios. What I want to really bring forward is 83% of those data breaches that we see really involve the human element. So what that is in our world, we call that social engineering. This isn't the, hey, I hacked someone's firewall, or brute forced my way in, or anything like that. It's really manipulating human behavior and leveraging known actions that we see. We see a lot of that with some of the malware that's out there, but we probably see it more in your inbox with phishing attempts, things like that. We have a lot of people, we have to work pretty hard. There's a lot of people that try to impersonate Dr. Bowers. We see a lot of impersonation of our building leadership, the principals. And I think we're a somewhat susceptible industry, because a lot of those we see are helping families. That's really the pitch, and that's what we're in the business of, too. So I think we're probably targeted a little bit more than other industries, specifically from that realm. The other interesting piece that's out there is ransomware. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but that's basically someone illegally denying access to your data. A lot of times that's done through means of encryption. But what I want to draw attention to is what that's costing, folks, because that's really the driving force, is what we're seeing in this industry, is this is becoming a business because it is profitable. So in 2001, the average ransomware paid in the K-12 market across the country was $541,000. Across the whole country in 2001, it was a $3.56 billion industry. So that's starting to kind of shed some light of, why would people do this? This isn't just folks being ornery. This is a profitable venture for them. Another big one that we see, and probably, you know, these are national numbers, we probably see a higher incidence in this, and this is kind of my personal experience of what are called denial-of-service attacks. The best way to explain that is if you think of our internet pipe, so outbound inbound traffic, think about it as a highway, think about an event releasing at Nationwide Arena. You just throw enough cars and enough data and enough traffic on there, it really just stops things. We've probably seen that the most, and I know I've had to work to mitigate some of those even in my short time with the district. So, and the last kind of area that I have addressed previously is really that phishing piece, is we're starting to see extremely well-detailed, coordinated emails and events trying to get people to share information that we just shouldn't. So, so what I really like about this slide is it talks about the cyber market. So I'm not going to quiz you on anything like SQL injection, or zero-day exploits, or anything like that. That's my world. What I think's really interesting is really who we're leading these attacks. So we do have cyber gangs that are out there. There are nation-state actors, and then just political activists that are out there. So these are extremely well-coordinated efforts, because it is a profitable business model for them. What's really interesting is, if you think about it from a business model, we actually see Yelp reviews about, from some of these bad actors. That seems really interesting, right? Like, why? Because if you're experiencing a ransomware, and you're shelling out $541,000 on average, how do you know you're actually going to get your information? So there are positive reviews out there, and then other presentations actually show some screenshots of those reviews. What's also interesting is they've been praised as having really good tech support. As people are stumbling, trying to get encryption keys to work, things like that, these bad actors actually have pretty good tech support, because they want people to be successful so they're able to continue on their ventures. So it's an interesting world, but that's the world that we're in right now. So with that, the big driving force behind a lot of this really is, you know, who's on the hook for some of those big dollar values, or big numbers that we're seeing out there. We do have cyber insurance, and it is our insurance companies that would be on the hook for some of this. But what I want to highlight is with that cyber insurance, they actually have some great coverages for us if we were to experience an incident, that they would help us with the response, the communication, understanding the data breach, and then being able to work through what that means after the fact, and making sure that we have the right mitigation strategies there, too. So with that, we do participate in the Ohio School Plan, so there are insurance carriers in this world, and they've obviously have concerns. They don't want to pay these large numbers out. So they've done a really good job of educating districts and really putting forward a plan and teaming up with different entities that they have access to across the state to be able to help us make sure that we identify the areas of vulnerability and be able to move forward and mitigate as many of the risks that we can. So what you see here is just a lot of the categories that they break these items into. So multi-factor authentication, sometimes you hear that referred to as two-factor authentication. That's the, sometimes you get a code on your phone after you log in. So those are big focuses for us, along with, because looking at that high percentage of that human element, employee training's been a really big focus for us. So with that, some of the strategies that we're pushing forward with is really that awareness. So when it comes to employee training, the first step is really the awareness and understanding the why. So with that, I've actually been going out with my team and meeting with all of the teachers in either a building staff meeting, or just an alternate meeting. So I think I have about 10 under my belt and actually have the rest of the district scheduled. So we're showing a similar kind of presentation, making sure that they understand the why, because there are changes coming, some more immediate than others. So I'd also be remiss if I didn't take a moment to say that the staff has been exceptional. You know, this isn't the most uplifting topic, and things are going to change a little bit in the world. I've had zero complaints, and they've just been awesomely supportive. So wanted to take a moment for that. With that, we do have some specific training that we plan to implement next year, similar to our public school works, just to make sure that we're staying on top of the new threats that are popping up fairly regularly now. With that, another big one that's out there is endpoint detection. That was in the previous slide. This is the big piece of what I didn't talk about, was if there is a data breach, the average time of knowing that your data has been breached is 287 days. That's a really long time for people to have access to your information. So a big effort for us right now is making sure that we have that endpoint detection, that we would know that something's going on. And we're extremely fortunate that this is kind of all hitting at the same point, but we actually kicked off a meeting last Friday with the Ohio Cyber Reserve. So this is a division of the Ohio National Guard that the governor stood up in 2019, and what they're doing is making themselves available to all organizations, state organizations, to help us start with an audit and then start working on some of the mitigation tasks. So we're fortunate, we've been working with that crew to understand what the process is, and we actually had our kickoff last week. So with that audit, we talked through, you know, what are some of the standards that we need to look at? What's interesting is, some of our other mitigation strategy standards, we landed on what's called the NIST, some of the NIST information or standards, and that's the National Institute of Standards and Technology, federal agency under the U.S. Department of Commerce. So sometimes it's better to be lucky than good. So we actually implemented some of the NIST standards, and our audit, I think, is going to fall under some NIST frameworks and standards. And with that, it's not just looking at intrusion detection and a lot of techie things. There's a lot of other pieces around it. It's looking at policy, it's looking at asset management and verification, and it's going to be uncomfortable. You know, that's just the reality of it, but I'm really excited. So I think we established a great rapport with the crew that's coming, and we're excited for what it's going to yield, because there's a couple of specifics things that they've kind of shared, and I'm like, yeah, I really want that. So I'm excited for what the end result's going to be. We haven't put our project timeline. I would anticipate the audit being concluded probably next fall. It's extremely thorough, and then starting to put our plan together for what mitigation strategies and areas of focus we need to look at. So some of the other things that are out there, too, is we are working to make sure that we keep a lot of those, a lot of those bad emails out of staff's inboxes. So we have some other projects that we're going to work on over the summer that, you know, we don't need an audit to tell us that we could probably do a better job. So sticking to the positive vibe piece, that wasn't the most positive piece, but I do want to share a positive piece that Charlie kind of brought up, spending a little bit more time at the WEC here, was he's been seeing the operations of trying to, of what it takes to actually be a one-to-one school districts with Chromebooks. So within the last, I want to say, four weeks, maybe five weeks, we've received 2,500 Chromebooks. We get these in multiple semis and a lot of new Chromebook carts. So he's seen skid after skid come in, we've unpackage them, we get the asset, you know, asset-tag them, prep them, and get them ready. So I just wanted to take a moment and be able to share some of the positive, that we have new devices getting ready for kindergarten, sixth grade, and ninth graders coming in for next school year. And I think TJ would be on me, too, if I didn't mention, these are SER-funded, so being able to leverage as many opportunities out there as we can. So with that, I will kick it over to any questions that anyone has.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Collett, for an excellent presentation. I'm going to let my colleagues here ask questions here, but I do want to just emphasize that we understand the sensitive nature of this topic, and I want you to feel totally free to say, you either don't want to answer it, or you would talk to us individually about a question. So don't feel any obligation to answer any questions, because we certainly don't want to compromise any security, but this is a board that loves to ask questions. So who wants to go first?
All right. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Jeff, thanks so much for the presentation and the work that you're doing in this area. I have just a few questions. So there was one slide, I think it was number three, that had percentages next to the different areas that you're seeing in the world of education, and I presume this is maybe what overall, entire education landscape in the United States? Yes?
Correct. So this is kind of the impact that we're seeing in K-12 organizations in 2001 across the U.S.?
So of the data breaches, 2% of them were phishing, of successful data breaches. Obviously, there's a ton of attempts in that space.
And what was reported, and-
Okay, very good. That would be an area that I would just recommend that we should have the training as well, because I absolutely know, especially when you're president or vice president, you tend to get a lot of those in our space as well. So when you talk about that human element, and the things that people should know and watch for, and just to mitigate the risk, I feel like maybe next time we have a work session or something, we could incorporate that in. And then, what was the other? Yeah, it was the 2%, and then understanding, or us being a part of the training. But thanks also, I guess I would say, about the Ohio National Cyber Reserve. I had no idea that they existed, and I should, and so that's really great to know and appreciate you tapping into that resource. It's already there. It's always great when we can tap into those who are already structured, too, and willing to help the school districts.
Absolutely. And I can't take credit for it, too. It was in one of my regional meetings that came up, and we kind of build on that, so it's-
You can take credit for engaging with your peers, right?
Yes, I will give my peers credit.
Identifying when there's a good resource that's shared, and following up on it. So thanks. Really appreciate it.
Amy?
I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for the presentation and say that I learned quite a few different terms that I did not know at all before. And I just wanted to say that I agree with Nikki's comment about some training for us, too, because I think that we do occasionally receive things where it's clearly a phishing email, but then there are some times where there's some, and I think I forwarded a few to you and said, I don't know what's going on, but just because we are seeing that in our space, too.
Absolutely. And that's the challenge, is being in the position you're in, is you want to respond, but always be cautious, too. So, yeah, we'll work through that.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Thank you very much. I heard you at, I'm trying to remember if it was the Key Communicators or PTA Council, but you had done your presentation, and it was really good and helpful. So I really appreciate you coming here, and I appreciate you going out to the staff and taking the time to have those meetings, and I hadn't thought of it, but it would be a really good idea, yeah, for us, to get that. And you talked a little bit about the upcoming audit. I didn't really even realize there was such a thing as a cyber audit, is that we've never been through anything like that before, correct?
Not that I'm aware of. So we've been through technology audits, things like that, with different areas, but not a cybersecurity-specific one that I know that I'm aware of.
Well, thank you for starting in on that, because it's bound to be helpful. So we appreciate it.
Yep, welcome.
That's it.
Thank you again for an excellent presentation. I just have one question, that's actually your question. I was looking forward to the answer. Why aren't they punished? The bad actors. On Slide four, you asked, why aren't they punished?
It really comes down to, where are these actions occurring? So you figure if it's in the state, say Highway Patrol has a great cybercrime division, you start crossing state boundaries, the FBI would be involved, but these aren't happening inside our country. So, you know, it's really just the enforceability of anything like that that we're seeing, and some of that comes down to the nation-state actors that are out there. So, yeah, we, it's really tough not to give a specific answer to this, like, hey, we're mitigating it this way and that way. But, yeah, that's really what it comes down to, is I don't know that any of our federal agencies want to, you know, burn any ties over some of these dollar amounts. They're big to us, but maybe not in the national scope of things.
Okay, thank you very much. And I want to endorse the, I think, unanimous view that it would be really good to train this board, because we do get these. And I guess to follow up, in the last couple of months, I've gotten several of these. Dr. Bowers wants you to look at this personnel evaluation, or this is, or something like that. So we should report those to you?
You can. We can take some actions, but our goal is to give you the ability to take action here.
Okay, fortunately, I've never clicked on one, but I think, I just want to do what you want us to do in best practices, but I didn't think of it. But I think, unless you object, I think I will forward any, anything that looks suspicious.
You can, and you can mark them as spam, too. There's a button there, and we'll cover that in the training. There's a button there and we'll cover that in the training, so.
But if Dr. Bowers is sending me something that's really important, I don't want to ignore it if it in fact isn't a, but what I do is just kind of hover over the sender and if the email address just looks very bizarre, then I don't click on things.
I would also encourage you to look at the salutation that they use.
See if it's spelled properly?
Well, sometimes there's warmest regards, Dr. Bowers, so.
I didn't hear that.
We've seen someone impersonating Dr. Bowers, actually to TJ, and they ended it with warmest regards, so. It's a pretty good indicator.
Apparently, I don't typically end my email with warmest regards or really anything that's empathetic.
I wouldn't want to imply that. It's just not, out of character from the norm.
And my team's laughing a little too hard. There may be a little too much truth.
All right. Thank you very much, unless anybody else has. Thank you. That was very helpful.
Thank you.
And we much appreciate it. Thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to get a, I understand that there's no motion here. We're going to get a presentation about a curriculum resource recommendation. Actually, I saw the, there's the card in here. I saw it out there earlier today. Actually, I looked through some of the history books. But so we'll have the presentation, I believe, at the next board meeting is when we will vote whether or not to adopt the recommendations. So no motion and no roll call here. But Ms. Wegley or Ms. Adrian, it's your show.
So I think you're going to be, serve some cake. So while that's happening and while Kelly is making her way to the lectern, I just want to give you a quick summary of what we shared, what will be shared with you this evening regarding a few different curricular resource adoptions. So our curriculum leaders, including Kelly Wegley, Tom Kazemiric and Brian Genius, have worked with groups of teachers who have committed themselves to engage in this very important work we call curriculum resource adoption. So while this is a necessary process, it is pretty cool to watch our teachers engage with one another and see their passion for teaching and learning come to life when they're all in a room together, making really important decisions about the most effective classroom resources for our students. So tonight, you'll hear a little bit from Kelly about social studies K-8 adoption. And those are in bands, so K-2, 3.6 and 7.8. And Kelly will share a little bit about those bands with you. And then Brian or Tom are not here this evening, but you will be asked to approve AP Environmental Science. And that is just an update. It's a new addition. So not a lot of digging into that resource because we like the resource and it's just a new addition. And that's about nine years old. And then chemistry is a Pearson text that's replaced with McGraw-Hill, another 10-year-old text, but just one that is outdated. So and then Tom worked with precalculus and that is a 12-year-old resource that we're just updating. So nothing new, same line and resource, just an update to that. And then Kelly's going to talk a little bit about social studies. One of those resources is 13 years old and the other two are 10 years old. So just a reminder that these textbooks and resources will be available for two weeks at the old Worthington Library, the Northwest Library, the Worthington Park Library. And as Charlie mentioned, they are in the back of the room here at the Worthington Education Center. That's so that parents and our community members may provide us additional feedback. So there is a folder in there with cards that as you look at those resources or community looks at those, they can add some feedback, ask questions. That gives us some time to get back to those families or those parents to answer those questions. And then your final approval, we will ask for on Monday, May 8. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Thank you, Angie. Thank you. Good evening, President Wilson, Vice President Hudson, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Cusick and Dr. Bowers. Before I get started, I do want to introduce you to two others who have joined us this evening, two members of our team of teachers. So right back here, I'm going to ask him to wave, Jennifer Schulze. She is one of our kindergarten teachers at Colonial Hills. And Tiffany Smith teaches sixth grade for us at Worthingway. And you'll have an opportunity, they'll join me when I finish, they'll come on up. So I'd like to, in the meantime, tell you just a little bit about our process and then our recommended core curricular texts for grades K-8 social studies, along with their accompanying resources. The general phrase "social studies," just so you know, encompasses history, geography, government and economics in grades K-8. So there are kind of four strands. As both Charlie and Kelly heard at our February 15 Curriculum Liaison Council's meeting, curriculum is defined as planned learning experiences with intended outcomes. Specifically, curriculum is the intersection of state standards and how we map them, high-quality instructional materials and instructional practices and assessment. State standards mapping addresses scope, which is the amount of content an educator will teach, and then sequence, the order in which that selected content is taught. Tonight though, we are talking most specifically about high-quality instructional materials for adoption. As Angie noted, our previous texts and materials for grades 1, 2 social studies were adopted in 2010. And our previous texts and materials for grades 3, 8 social studies were adopted in 2013. We currently have no formally adopted resources for kindergarten. Those were last adopted in 2009. Ohio's learning standards for social studies though, were updated in 2018. While the pandemic brought additional online support for grades 3, 8, it also delayed the opportunity to consider updated high-quality instructional materials to meet the requirements of our updated state standards. So in relation to those standards, it stated in the introduction to the Ohio State's social study standards, "The aim of social studies is the promotion of civic competence, the knowledge, intellectual processes and democratic dispositions required of students to be active and engaged participants in public life. Although civic competence is not the only responsibility of social studies, nor is it exclusive to the field, it is more central to social studies than any other subject area in schools. Civic competence rests on a commitment to democratic values and requires the ability to use knowledge about one's community, nation and world, to apply inquiry processes and employ skills of data collection and analysis, collaboration, decision-making and problem-solving." As noted in the social studies K-8 high-quality instructional materials adoption process blog published today, our teachers, and I would say especially our newest teachers, deserve high-quality instructional materials that act as a common language and a platform for engaging all partners in students' educational experiences. So it clearly was time to engage in the Worthington Schools Resource Review Process. And you can see a graphic that supports you a little bit in that. You saw the fruits of this particular process most recently in last year's K-8 science adoption. But this is our, this is our process. So following my initial search, and you can see kind of at the top there, the curriculum leader, who's the person serving in that role, begins that initial search. And that began in late summer and early fall. Then we had a team of 26 K-8 teachers, of whom Jen and Tiffany are two, and seven also who serve as DEI champions in their respective buildings, worked in grade band teams to review four to five resources at vendor presentations in late November and early December. Those teams then narrowed, and you can see that's our next part is that narrowing piece, the field to two pilot options per grade band. And then they partnered with their students to pilot resources, starting in January and continuing into March. So that was kind of our opportunity to drive the car a little bit, kick the tires and just get a sense of how well will this really work in our setting? And we learned a lot from that. In March, teams reconvened to decide which instructional materials we would recommend to you for approval. So of course, it's important that we adopt instructional materials that first teachers will use. And then also, along with that, we need those materials to meet the guidelines of high-quality instructional materials in social studies. So they should integrate inquiry-based instruction. They should support culturally responsive education. They should utilize standards-based instruction and assessment. They should connect to high-quality diverse sources. They should be accessible for a range of learners and then provide instructional supports and continuous professional learning. So in addition to those criteria, members of our community, who participated in a March 2022 Grade 8 U.S. History Focus Group, and our Curriculum Liaisons Council, which includes representation from every school in the district, provided input regarding factors about our student population that should be considered, what our curriculum should provide for families and our broader community, instructional values that must be reflected in our curriculum, and then the role of technology in our curriculum. The full document is available, it's linked to the blog that I mentioned earlier, but criteria that emerged as significant for our community included language access. We recently had a presentation from Ben Rule about the growing population of English learners in our district, building background knowledge, important for every single one of our students. Student-based inquiry, the inclusion of diverse perspectives and texts, application and hands-on learning, and the connecting the study of history to current events. Let me turn my page here. And a balance between technology and physical materials. While no one resource can comprise an entire curriculum, we do feel confident that the recommendations that we are making to you this evening are good recommendations. So we're going to start with K-2. So in addition to meeting the criteria I've shared, our K-2 team noted the highly responsive support provided by Savvas and the benefit to teachers and students of having the same platform and general layout as the resources they adopted for science last year. So Savvas is our K-2 adoption for science as well. During the Savvas pilot training, one teacher said, "This training has helped me better understand how to use my science resources too." Teachers appreciated the ability to create and share instructional playlists and that there were a number of materials from which they could pick and choose to support their students. One of the second grade teachers engaged his whole second grade team in the pilot and noted that three hours of planning for an economics unit led to three weeks of interactive learning, in which students wrote in journals, built irrigation systems and performed a reader's theater. Teachers also indicated success incorporating social studies reading materials into their literacy block and being able to leverage Seesaw in support of that. Teachers like Jen can tell you in a very short amount of time with kindergarten how important that really is. Our grades 3, 6 teachers are opting for TCI, which is Teachers Curriculum Institute, Instructional Materials. So to share more about the reasons for this choice, we have some special guests from Worthington State Estates Elementary School.
Hi! Work ethicers from Worthington Estates, we're going to tell you how much we love TCI.
So Sean, can you tell us why you love TCI?
I love TCI because it's very organized and like all the journals are on place, all the booklets are on place. And like the different ways to say it, it's like, we're on a, we're on a schedule to get everything on place.
Vivian, can you tell us another reason why you love TCI?
Because it changes tons of information about America and history and how so much originally came to America.
Your themes are fun and it's so similar.
Sage, can you show us one of your favorite features on the TCI website?
I'm worried if I was having trouble reading, it had a bloody knuckling date for it.
One, America before 1,800, the first group of people to move to North America came thousands of years ago.
I am a man, no man, they always change. I can understand what's right and wrong, and the price will go, down, down it goes, down, down it goes. What's right is high and wrong is low.
So Charlie, we didn't sing "Happy Birthday" this evening, but I'm guessing the supply and demand song might stay in your mind for a bit. Special thanks to Tori McLeod and her third grade class for their enthusiasm and insights. And also special thanks to Cory Carter, who helped elevate the sound on the kids' audio so that we could hear them a little better. The TCI resources also integrate smoothly with Seesaw and Schoology. They connect to Google Translate. They offer adjustments to support a variety of learners and they include primary sources and activities to make the lessons more inquiry-based and to help students develop critical thinking skills. Regarding standards alignment, TCI was our strongest option. Grades 4, 5 and 6 standards in Ohio differ in their organization from standards in most other states, and TCI offers custom materials that are up to date. We will continue, of course, to access support from our own Worthington Historical Society, as well as the Ohio Historical Society's Ohio as America Resource for Grade 4 and Studies Weekly to support government and econ standards in Grade 5. And finally, our grade 7, 8 teachers decided in favor of the Savvas My World Interactive World History and American History options respectively. For our seventh grade group, this really could have gone either way. TCI is our most recently adopted resource for grades 6 through 8, and both grade 6 and 7 teachers see the strength in the resource. Grade 7 teachers ultimately agreed that students liked the Savvas text, particularly the timelines, the maps and the tables, as well as the ability to shift languages within the platform and have the text read aloud in the selected language. During our Grade 8 U.S. History Curriculum Review last year, it quickly became apparent that our Grade 8 teachers were eager for a new resource that offers fuller coverage of their standards, language access and inclusion of diverse perspectives and texts. Both grade levels appreciate the full integration with Schoology, which makes it easy for parents to be apprised of what students are learning and for a robust resource that scaffolds interactive student learning. So if we look back at our Resource Review Process graphic, you can see that if you approve these resources on May 8, we have two steps remaining. What I will assure you though, is that we are still at the beginning of this work. Successful implementation will require initial training and then ongoing support for implementation and opportunities to collaborate around updates to our curriculum maps in alignment with new instructional materials. So that's it for my presentation. I am happy to answer questions now and I'd like to invite Jen and Tiffany to come on up as well.
Thank you for an excellent presentation. Any questions? Ms. Davis?
So, I mean, it's just so thorough that sometimes you have a hard time asking questions because you've answered everything. Thank you again for bringing the students in. I know the last time when we talked about science, there were some students that came in and we talked, there was an AP like history class where a student came in and advocated for the materials. And that's always great feedback for us to hear. And I just love how you incorporate so many groups of people that are going to interact with these materials. So just, you know, thank you for all your work. The training aspect of it, how does, can you just briefly talk about how that works and who is involved in the training as you like implement the process?
That's a great question. So there are multiple steps to that, but I'll give you an example just because I was just working with our rep from TCI. So TCI has some on-demand resources. And so for people who want, our goal is to make sure teachers have new resources in their hands before they leave for the summer this year. And when I say leave for the summer, they're continue to do work over the summer, but before the school year lets out. But so I want them to have those resources. We'll then give them the opportunity to build a little bit of conceptual understanding with some of those resources that are out there on the web. But once we roll the system over, and Jeff has got that planned for mid to late July, and teachers are rostered actually with their own students and their classes, they'll be able to, within their course, do an on-demand training that will actually click them right into their course where they can practice. So they'll learn and then they'll have the opportunity to practice. We have a scheduled, have scheduled with the rep to do an in-person training also. So people have that opportunity. And then we'll build in some times when we can come together, share what we're doing and continue to work on aligning our curricular resources. And I'll give you an example. In grade 4, TCI has for the First Amendment, they are, for the Bill of Rights, they have all the amendments, but really in grade 4, they need to hone in on the First Amendment. So even just to be able to say, hey, these, this is what we need to do to meet our standards, the rest of this is kind of bonus, so that our new teachers and all of our teachers are able to come into alignment. A goal for me will be to build some kind of course where teachers can earn some Ashland credit, but also have that opportunity to continue to, you know, to interact. And we'll bring that. And we'll bring that rep back at some point during the year also, just to do kind of a, you've lived with this for a while, now what does that, you know, what does that look like? And similar kinds of support for Savis. And the Savis rep has been in the district, even during the pilot, she came and spent a day traveling around, talking with teachers, listening to teachers, and really responding as they had questions like, hey, this doesn't seem to work exactly, you know, the way we'd like it to, but she was super helpful with that. So we feel good about the support. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Okay, thank you all for being here. My question is about the pilot program. I'm curious, how many classes in each grade level actually pilot? And when you say pilot, that means you've given up the other resources and you are strictly using the new perspective resource and the parents have access to it on Schoology, just like the typical resources? Do you want to talk about that a little?
Sure. So I teach 6th grade at Worthingway, and we piloted two different textbooks. One, we knew right away that it wasn't going to, it didn't have the depth of knowledge that we had previously used with our current resource. And so I ended that particular text pretty quickly because I didn't want to sabotage the current students' experience with that topic. The following, then the other one that I tried, we made sure it worked with Schoology and the one that Kelly said that the company went around and met with people. They had a lot going for them. There were a few missing pieces that we felt for the 6th grade content that were important, but the students had access to it. A lot of the students liked the bright shiny book, you know, so they had their positives, they had their negatives, but I think involving the students is an important piece, getting them excited about these things. But I ended up making the decision that our current resource that had been updated would be our best solution. But yes, everything was shared with students at that time.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I can see. So I teach kindergarten, in which Kelly had said we actually do not have a curriculum currently for social studies. So what kindergarten teachers do is they have to go and find the resources for themselves. So what I did was I took our unit on maps and I used the curriculum from Savis, and I would, and I planned it just like I would for, if this was our curriculum for the whole year. And I found that the students were very engaged with it. I liked the resources, just the variety of resources. And what Kelly spoke to also was that the publisher really had point people for us. So in the middle of that unit, I was able to speak with someone and go over any questions or if I had anything that I wanted to bring up or just kind of talk about with them. So I really liked the process with that.
So for kindergarten, you went from really no specific resources to now having one?
Yes.
So it's a big change.
It is a big change, and I think just as the grade level across the district, we're really looking forward to that, having the additional resources besides just the standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Amy?
I don't have any other questions. I just wanted to thank you all for a great presentation and all the work you did on working to update these resources, and also a special thanks to Mrs. McLeod's class for sending us that cute video.
Thank you, Amy.
I will echo those sentiments. I think Kelly stated it first, like, just a remarkably thorough process. And for all of the teachers involved as well as those who are, whether you're in a peer teacher role or a DEI champion role, I know this is above and beyond the day-to-day work, which speaks to the level of commitment in our district, and it's just, it's noticed and we're extremely grateful for it. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I fully agree with the comments of all four of my colleagues, but I do have a couple of questions here, having spent a little bit of time looking at the history book. My first question is, I noticed that for three or four of the books, the copyright is 2019, four years old already. Is that, I mean, especially for our history books, is that problematic? I guess, you know, we, when you say that it's been 10 or 13, we're using 10 and 13-year-old resources, that's troubling, but you're asking us to adopt something that's going to be four or five years old by the time it's implemented.
So that's a great question. In fact, I was talking with Brian Genius today, and I said, so I know I'm going to get a question about that copyright. And what I would say is because we have the benefit of, in particular with those resources, we have consumables that we get every year, so as those are updated, we'll get those updated consumables. And we, as they update online, then that update happens in real time. I will say that having taken a little time, and this is one of the other, the other resource, but Tiffany and I spent some time really looking at updates in TCI, I would say over the past 10 years. And I would say that what we noticed is that there are some important updates, but they're rather subtle, so that it's not like, they don't just kind of start and rewrite the whole book, but that there are some subtle updates that happen. So while that was certainly something that we took into consideration, I took into consideration, I feel okay with that particular copyright date.
Okay. Also, I noticed that we're not using entirely TCI. We got a great endorsement from, I'm proud to say, a very diverse class. That was awesome. A very enthusiastic class, and knowing Ms. McLeod, I can see why they're enthusiastic and eager to learn. But is that, actually, I could argue it either way, but you're using Savis for some, for some grades and TCI for some. Is that problematic? Or, yeah, I guess I'm concerned about the scaffolding in the building, if that's a...
So when we approached the process, and I approached the process really similarly to how we approached it with science, knowing that we want some continuity for students, knowing that we want some continuity for teachers, and that teachers do sometimes move, shift grade levels, and so we thought about that as well. So we really started the process with the idea that K-2, we wanted to have a common, a common resource that 3, 6, we wanted to have a common resource in 6, 8, that we wanted to have a common resource. I would say that Ohio's social studies challenges, that I, or social studies standards that I referenced in the, in the presentation for grades 4, 5, 6, and even a little bit of 7, make it challenging for us to do, for us to really have any curriculum that would totally meet the needs. I think, though, for our students, much as with other resources, they, there is some shifting in resources from year to year, and so it's a question of us teaching our students to be able to use those resources. But I feel really good about going from K, they're figuring it out on their own, 1 was a different resource, 2 is a different resource. We had other, our oldest adoption did not have that kind of continuity. So we've increased our continuity quite a lot to two resources with that K-2, 3, 6, and then that 7, 8. And 7, 8 is a nice transition into the kinds of resources that they're using in the high school as well.
Excellent response. And I would also argue that, to the, the differences aren't profound by any between, I don't think, or, I guess I'm not, I don't know as much as the kids know about TCI, but anyway, I'm not as, yeah, I can't be as enthusiastic since I don't know as much. But to the extent there is a slightly different perspective or approach, it might, you know, one might be better for, depending on how a child learns, that one way might be a little better than the other. And so changing, rather than being stuck or having the same one for nine consecutive years, kindergarten through 8th grade, may be a plus as well.
Yep.
Now, just a couple of general comments about the books that I looked at. First of all, I really like the emphasis on primary sources, and I thought that was excellent reference to primary sources. I think that's really critical for histories, but I was surprised not to see any bibliography or notes or list of authorities in any of the history books. Maybe they never have, as we found out, it's been since 2010 or 2013 since we've adopted something, so I may have just forgotten, but I found that surprising. And then finally, I want to agree with you, and for the teachers, the takeaway is, I personally believe our single most important task as a public school is to develop and promote the civic competence and engagement of our, of each and every one of our students. And that's why I think, you know, I fully understand science, I fully understand the importance of math, but from a standpoint of our society, building that civic competence and civic engagement among our students is really important. So the work you're doing, in my opinion, is extremely important, and my quick look at those books is that this will enable, will assist our teachers in doing that. So thank you very much for an excellent presentation, and thank you too for taking time out of your Monday night to come and share with us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you for the presentation. At this time, we're ready for reports and announcements. We'll start with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Just to follow up on that presentation, a reminder to our community that those materials are on display at all of our public libraries within the Worthington system and here at our Worthington Education Center. So anybody that wants to check on those can do so in person. All of those late resources are also linked on my blog that went out today on social media as well, so if anybody just Googles that, wants to click on those resources, they can review them. But we will ask for your approval on May 8th. So from a superintendent's report standpoint, just a reminder, our mission in Worthington schools is to empower a community of learners who will change the world, and we have four vision statements, and we attempt to organize this report in those statements. So one of our vision statements is we will engage each student with diverse opportunities to maximize every student's potential. Our students do that in many different ways. Our spring sports teams, our performing arts, and our robotics teams have all or each displayed an exceptional level of commitment, creativity, and sportsmanship. As we cheer them on and enjoy their performances over these final four weeks of school, we're reminded of the invaluable lessons that these activities teach our students in teamwork, perseverance, and leadership. Our second vision statement's around providing a safe environment where every student can grow intellectually, emotionally, socially, and physically. With that in mind, our community will see later this week or into the next week, construction fencing going up in the front lawn of Thomas Worthington High School, so demolition can begin as soon as school is out. Our goal at Thomas and eventually at Worthington Kilborn is to create new learning spaces that are both physically and emotionally safer for our students with better secure entrances, natural light, indoor and outdoor space at both of our high schools. And as that project begins, we recently had over 400 alumni spanning multiple generations touring Thomas Worthington High School. They were there to reminisce and bid farewell before the school undergoes a significant renovation. Principal Scully really did a great job leading a nostalgic event, sharing updates on upcoming construction. Alumni walked the halls, memories were shared, and people really had positive thoughts about what is the future to come. So are the gatherings demonstrated to us kind of the enduring legacy of Thomas Worthington High School and what is without question our community's strong commitment to providing an excellent educational environment for generations to come? We have a couple more of those, I don't know if tours are the right word, ability to walk the halls one final time. May 1st at 7:00 p.m., Saturday, May 20th at 9:00 a.m. Those will go out in our today's news to community members, so if people want to do that before demolition begins. Our third vision statement's, we'll provide a consistent communication to promote dialogue with our community. With the closing of the this week news, we're working to create new ways to share information with our community. We've always relied on that this week newspaper, it had a monthly column in that newspaper. So we are, just last month, announced the launch of our new monthly newsletter, Changing the World, which is designed to be a click-to page, sharing the latest news and events happening within our schools. Our newsletter will feature updates on student accomplishments, district initiatives, upcoming events, and much more. It will be in addition to the four newsletters that are quarterly that we mail to all homes. The goal with this, this monthly newsletter is to physically take it to places, libraries, local businesses, community buildings. Also, we'll obviously link it digitally in all of our digital communications, it's also up on our website. But so in addition to our four quarterly newsletters, we're launching a monthly newsletter that we hope people will, will access as a way to try to replace some of what we lost with that community newspaper. And then finally, we'll be responsible and transparent with our community's resources. Over the last several weeks, we've been engaged in collective bargaining with our Worthington Education Support Professionals. That's the employee union that represents our support staff. Last week, we reached a tentative agreement on a new three-year deal. It's our belief that this deal recognizes and values Worthington support staff and will hopefully allow Worthington to recruit and retain staff in hard-to-fill areas. I believe in the coming days, the WESP, our Worthington Education Support Professionals, will begin communicating the agreement with their members, and in the next few weeks, their members will need to vote to ratify the agreement. So after they've done that, the Board of Education will be asked to vote on the agreement for it to be official. So we expect that either at the May 8th meeting or the May 22nd meeting, so one of those two May meetings, kind of dependent on the support professional timeline. Guys, we have amazing support staff in Worthington, and hopefully this deal shows that we, as a district, value their important work. With that, Dr. Wilson, that's my update.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gusek with us, treasurer's report.
Thank you. Good evening. A few items tonight, the first of which is a reminder, the monthly financial report was provided to the board last week and made published on our website a little bit later in the month than usual due to spring break. Receipts are running 1% over projections, mainly attributable to our property tax collections and specifically delinquent collections. We typically collect 98, 99% of our collections, and then we collect 1% to 2% delinquent the next year, and those came in a little bit higher than anticipated, so those are being caught up faster than, than normal. On the expenditure side, we're running 1% under budget, and I believe, as Mr. Collett mentioned, we continue to utilize the remaining S.R. dollars for Chromebook replacements, so I, I am confident that we will continue and finish the year 1% to 2% under budget. That puts our cash, cash position about 2% better than projected. However, medical claims were much higher than anticipated for the month. Claims are typically volatile in terms of timing, so it's early in the year, but we'll watch that closely. And we did create a page on the, the last page of the monthly report to keep everyone up to date on the 2022 bond proceeds. It's early in its infancy. We obviously haven't started a lot of construction, but as we progress, hopefully that, that page will show us where we're at. Have some good news on, some legislative news. I'm happy to report the House Finance Committee included in its substitute budget bill, an update to the funding formula to 2022 costs. That was included in our resolution last time. So they did move to the formula 2022 costs, as you all can probably imagine, that's significant because of the amount of inflation we had since the 2018 costs that were being used. So it's early in the process, but that's a positive first step, and so we'll keep track of how that progresses. And then lastly, an update to House Bill 1. The Ways and Means Committee has its seventh hearing on that bill tomorrow. Remember, this is the bill that moves Ohio to a flat income tax, eliminates property tax rollback, which would likely increase homeowner taxes, and then reduces the valuation assessment. Has a lot of impact, I think, that is still to be determined, so we'll wait and see if any changes are made to it tomorrow or to its future, but it has a hearing tomorrow afternoon. That's all.
Thank you very much, and it's always heartening to hear that our revenues are running above projections and our expenditures are running below expenditures, so that's very good news. All right, any reports by the board or announcements?
I can go. Um, let's see, I just have two things. Amy and I, the other week, had the opportunity to go to Worthington Hills Elementary School to listen to Wynn, which is Worthington Interface Neighbors Peace Ambassadors Group, do a presentation to their 3rd graders. And if you haven't gone to see this presentation, you have to. Like, so, we went to the last one this year, sorry. Do you have to wait till next year? You have to wait till next year, but these peace ambassadors are, I thought they were going to be just seniors, but they were freshmen to senior year, and so they're, they have this acronym SHINE. And so they're, they have this acronym, SHINE. And so it stands for different things, like standing up for your friends and include and not exclude. And so they do these skits that are the complete opposite of what they want, what we want, how we want our students and our community to interact. And so they do these skits, and then they ask the students, what did you think about that? And the kids are like, no! You know, and they're giving feedback as to, well, what would make it better? What was wrong with this? And what would make it better? And so then they implement the students' feedback into their next presentation, which is when they show and demonstrate standing up for your friends and including people and educating yourself about the diversity in our community. So it was just a wonderful experience. The kids were enthusiastic and went, maybe some of them are adults. So the students, excuse me, the high school students were very enthusiastic. The third graders were excited, you know, because, cool, high school students are in our room. And so it was just a really good opportunity to do that. Then the organization gave a book to each classroom, so there, you know, all the third grade classrooms that were there, is the We Are Welcome book. I borrowed this from Toya, but she read, Toya read this during the Global Diversity Awareness Month last, earlier in the school year. So kids will be familiar with it. They can continue conversations. So it was a good opportunity next year, sign up. I know, I think Neil or Rob, sorry, Rob sends those dates out. So that was a really good opportunity. And they appreciate that we were there. Then Charlie and I went to the CLC meeting, which Angie went over the AAPL communicator. So we all got that, but community members don't usually see that. So she reviewed that material with them, and they were pretty enthusiastic about it, I think. And we're really expect, like, you know, how can we get this information as well? So I think Angie's going to kind of work on that to tweak it and like scale it down a little bit for community members, but that was really good. And Rob went over the MTSS process. And these materials are put in our shared folder. And then Angie reviewed the DEI Champion Projects, another material that I'll give to you, because it was just, they broke down into different groups, and they all did different passion projects. So they did like a DEI handbook and things like that. So it'd just be interesting for you guys to look at and see what the work that our DEI champions are doing. That's all. That's all I have.
Jennifer, nothing? Amy?
Well, as Kelly said, we went to the Peace Ambassadors presentation, and I also agree that it was excellent, and hopefully there will be more opportunities for us to attend those next year. I don't have anything else.
I'll just share, I had the pleasure of attending the PTA Council meeting last week. We, Angie provided an AAPL update there, and then they talked primarily about their positions, a scholarship update, and then their budget planning for next year. Within their budget, they, you may recall, they provided funding this year for transportation hospitality, and they had different PTAs partner with each other for any given month and provide some type of a treat or some degree of hospitality to our transportation. That seemed to go extremely well, and so the plan is to carry that forward. And then I just wanted to give a shout out to, well, Tasha Addy and Dennis Bryan are president and vice president, and they're continuing on. And then Michael Gallagher was the treasurer, and he served his two-year term and is stepping down. And Ken, I always pause on Ken's name. Is it Zupfer? Am I saying it right? Okay. Ken served her two years as secretary and is stepping down as well. So just a shout out to them and their dedication, all of them. For those of you who aren't very, who may be listening and aren't very familiar with the PTA Council, I think it is an invaluable way in which we bring together PTA leadership within our district and create continuity and opportunities and learnings throughout the district through those organizations. I will say one thing, one issue that I spoke with them about, issue, but topic I spoke with them about coincides nicely with the new creation of the monthly newsletters. And I don't know if this is an opportunity for it, but the fact that we have pending legislation that has such a potential large impact on our school district and just finding, always finding new ways to get that message out to the community. We talked about maybe we could have this, you know, part of, it could be part of legislative updates, could be part of the fiscal updates that's sent out, maybe the monthly newsletter is another opportunity. But I think the key thing we focused on was having a regular spot, a consistent spot that we create, and so that our community perhaps comes to think of as this is where I could go and get the latest in that space. Dr. Bowers, I know you did a recent blog post on the backpack bill, which I think is very important. I think with regards to communication, the biggest challenge is that no one channel gets everyone, right? And so the more we can saturate. And so I guess along with that, I just want to express gratitude for the new monthly newsletters. I know that's just an additional to-do on administrative's probably already very, not probably, already very, sorry, already very busy schedule. And yet, finding those ways in which we engage with our community members who don't have someone in school, don't have a student or a grandchild or anything along those lines is just really critical. So thanks for your efforts in that area.
Thank you. And I want to echo my agreement that I think this new communication, the new monthly newsletter, two pages, is really, really a good idea, and I'm glad we're doing that. Secondly, my, well, Charlie did a great job of summarizing the curriculum liaison committees. It was a fabulous meeting. Thirdly, I served as board observer at the collective bargaining involving our Worthington Education Support Professionals. And again, it was, I was very impressed by both sides. I want to start, though, by thanking Dr. Bowers and Mr. Kusick and their entire team in negotiating two collective bargaining agreements that are very reasonable to everyone, but especially to our students. And I think it's important that we remember that is no small thing, as certainly the school board members from Columbus or from Gehanna or Reynoldsburg will be quick to tell us that what our team did here is phenomenal. And I do want to praise the Worthington Ed, Support Professionals bargaining team. They were very focused, very, very competent, did a great job of advocating their positions. And I think we ended up, and they ended up with a much better contract as a result of their incredibly good job and focusing again on what's best for students. Just a couple of announcements. In, I guess it's two weeks, anyway, it's at the May 8th meeting, our very next meeting will be the Lions Club Volunteer Celebration. It'll be over here next door at 5:00 before our 6:30 meeting. And I think you all have invitations there in front of you, so to the extent you can make even part of it, you don't have, even if you can't be there right at 5:00, being there, it's a, it's a great chance for us as board members to acknowledge those people who've done really special things as volunteers in all of our school buildings. So remind you of that. Secondly, several of us are going to the Board Leadership Institute this Friday and Saturday, and looking forward to that. It's always a good one, looking forward to seeing board members there. Otherwise, I have nothing else at this time. Okay. At this time, to try to, to make this go a little more efficiently, may I have a motion to approve routine financial items E2 through E3?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve financial items E2 and E3. First, I'm going to give Mr. Kusick a chance to speak. Is there anything you want to say about either one of those, the minutes or the appropriations, modifications?
No, these are just the minutes from the April 10th meeting, as well as cross-object transfers in the general fund that net to zero.
All right. Any questions or comments or?
Okay, so I do. I missed the meeting on April 10th, but I watched it online, but should I just abstain?
Probably.
I'll just abstain. Okay.
It's not necessary for us to break it out. Could we, okay, all right. Any other comments? Okay. Mr. Kusick, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Best.
Abstain.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes. Motion passes. All right. At this time, may I have a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve the personnel consent agenda? Ms., Dr. Bowers.
Yeah, I'm just asking for a motion to approve items F2 through F8, please.
Okay. Any comments, questions? If not, Mr. Kusick, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Okay, now we're ready for actions recommended by the superintendent. May I have a motion to approve resolutions confirming the impracticality of busing students as declared by the superintendent at the schools listed in our agenda? Mr., oh, first let me get the motion and second, then I'll turn it over to Dr. Bowers.
Dr. Wilson, I'm going to back you up for just a second. So let's.
Did I skip something?
You skipped acceptance of donations.
Oh, my.
So why don't we take all three of these? Can we do a motion to do all items 1, 2, 3, and Section G, which is the acceptance of the donations, the resolution for impractical busing, and the senior remaining in the school district for the remainder of the senior year?
So moved.
It's been moved. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve items G1, G2, and G3. Any question, or first, Mr., or Dr. Bowers?
That's it. We're looking for the acceptance of the donations. We have an impractical busing resolution for several schools and a senior remaining in the school district.
Any questions or comments? If not, Mr. Kusick, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Motion passes. We're now ready for requests, questions, or concerns from the board. Ms. Best.
I do. I'll be very quick, I think. We've all gotten a lot of questions about school safety, especially over the past few weeks. We always do, but a little heightened now. And I know, Charlie, you send people to Randy Banks, and they always feel very comfortable after speaking with Randy. And I'm wondering if at an upcoming meeting, and I'm not surprising Randy, I've talked to him, if we could have him do a brief update for us on school safety and what we've got going. And then the other thing along those lines is that probably a year ago now, we had the meeting with the WEA and some staff about their ideas on school safety. That's where they talked about the vape detectors and the security monitors. It was about a year ago we had those discussions, and things were implemented this year. But I think it would be nice to have a follow-up with that group of staff members and see how things are going. The thing, all the things we've implemented this year, if they have questions, if they see issues, and maybe plan an update meeting on that. And I guess I'm also curious, we talk about the construction, do the teachers have questions on what's going to happen? Is we've got construction going on in the schools? Do we have the need for any additional steps? Curious what they think.
Jennifer, is the meeting that you're talking about, wasn't that a shared solutions meeting?
Well, it was the two of us that were there, and I think you're probably right. It was probably a shared solutions. It was, it was us. It wasn't the whole board. And they came.
Oh, I remember. I was just trying to remember what brought us together, and I thought it was a shared solutions.
Because the WEA had some ideas, so they probably did come as shared solutions to kind of chat about that.
Okay. That's, that's what, that was my recollection as well. And those are usually initiated by the union, correct? The WEA? Shared solutions? Or does the administration initiate those as well, Trent?
Well, in the contract, we both have the ability to call a shared solutions. I think it's fair to say it's much more often initiated by the WEA than the administration.
Okay.
Either side has the ability to.
To call those. Excellent. Okay, good.
That was in December of 2021, but you haven't. It was before I got here.
Oh, thanks, Kelly.
Okay. That is probably about right, because that was a time for discussion and research and then implemented for the school year.
Well, I think, I think those are excellent suggestions and, you know, to the extent Mr. Banks has time at some point to do and to incorporate that, because I, that's why I looked puzzled, because I couldn't remember a board meeting, I couldn't remember attending such a meeting, if it was a.
No, you didn't.
Shared solutions, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, finding out how things are working out and would be, be great to share with the full board, I think, and have a presentation.
Yeah, do some follow-up.
As time permits, yeah.
Okay.
Great idea.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just a couple of things, we still, I'm still trying to figure out how exactly we're doing resolutions, but I just want, I want to give a heads up that, because we have until May 31st, so at the next, between now and the next board meeting, I will circulate a draft resolution that is going to be very similar to the one that is, I think, just passed the Bexley School Board, and that is to have, to change the OSBA legislative platform to have the platform, so that OSBA will support legislation that expands background checks for gun purchasers, raises the minimum age to buy an AR-15-style semi-automatic rifle, and includes a red flag provision to, in Ohio law, to allow police to remove guns temporarily from owners that pose a danger. So I will be circulating that, and so you see the language in advance, and you can send any comments back to me, but I will borrow heavily from the Bexley. As I understand it, a number of school districts across the state are passing, are requesting the same thing in hopes of getting the OSBA legislative platform changed. And I think my only other real quick one here is that the voucher lawsuit proceeds. There are currently 228 school districts that have joined the Coalition. I think I've already reported the motion to dismiss was denied earlier this year, and this lawsuit will most likely take place in early 2024. There is a motion to quash discovery that will be heard in two days, or on Wednesday. But, and also, just like in Duroff, the Coalition is under very acute scrutiny by state officials and pro-voucher organizations. And in fact, the Coalition has been sued by a Sunshine Law bounty hunter. So that's exactly the same kinds of things that happened when the Duroff suit was brought by the Coalition. So nothing, nothing surprising. They're used to doing it. It's, Phil Phillips has been around forever, so he knows all about that, and the lawyers are taking care of that. And finally, just as a pointed personal privilege, I can't believe I sat within 10 feet of food and didn't notice it. That's very unlike, unlike me. I had no idea what Dr. Bowers was going to announce, but my throat, I had a lump in my throat. My heart was in my throat, and so I consider this extremely good news, and I thank whoever was responsible, I appreciate, I always appreciate cake or food of any kind, for that matter. But no, much appreciated, and, yeah, and apologize for not being a little bit prepared, but I had three granddaughters who are very verbose, and we had a two-and-a-half-hour FaceTime call, and they sang to me. So you all don't have to sing to me. I was sung to many, many times by three girls between 4:00 and 7:00. So, okay, so thank you. And we have just one more motion here. May I have a motion to, unless somebody else has something else?
Calendar.
Oh, okay. Thank you. The calendar here, important thing, our next board meeting will be May 8th, and at that, it'll be at 6:30, preceded by the Lions Club's recognition of. it'll be at 6:30 preceded by the Lions Club's recognition of our, to celebrate our top volunteers in each building. Then that's on Monday, May 8th. On Friday, May 12th at 12:30, we'll have a work session here. And on May 22nd will be the next board meeting after that, that will be at 6:30 again here at the Ed Center. And the important thing is that's when we will be getting a presentation on the, on the five-year forecast. Questions concerning their compensation and other terms and conditions of their employment?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This is not a debatable motion. Mr. Kusick, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Lloyd.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Okay, we will adjourn after the executive session. No votes or any business will be transacted after executive session.